Okay, thanks everyone for coming. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Carvin County Higher Education Center and the 2022 Primary Election Forum for Rollins City Council Candidates. Thanks to all of you in the audience, thanks to all of you on our Facebook Live or watching later, and a special thanks to all of the candidates. Thank you for putting yourselves out there and running for office. So, we are gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna do a quick introduction of staff. I'm Jennifer Moore. I'm the Director here at Higher Ed. Janet Garcia is here running our Facebook Live, and our moderator tonight is Cory Hudson. So, we'll go ahead and turn it over to her.
Great, thank you.
Again, thank you to the candidates. We are just going to start out with introductions. So each candidate will be given three minutes to introduce themselves, and as you're going, along with introductions, and when we get into questions, please pay attention to our timekeeper, which is going to be Jennifer. She'll hold up the yellow triangle to show you that you have thirty seconds left, and the red stop sign to show you that time is up. So, with our introductions, we sent out some suggestions that you could include in those introductions: the duties of the office, any experiences that you've had that prepare you for the office, some of the priorities and goals that you've had while serving in the office. So keep those in mind as you're going. And we will start on the end of the table with Jackie, with our at-large candidates, starting with you Jackie.
All right, I am Jackie Wells. I've been on the Rollins City Council for four years now. In my day-to-day work, I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse for fifteen years. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree from the University of Wyoming, both in nursing. I work for the state of Wyoming. I travel around the state supervising public health offices. I'm also involved in several community boards: the Local Emergency Preparedness Board, the Community Resource Center. I've been involved in the Wyoming Public Health Association. And for the city of Rollins, some of the things I'm most proud of is getting the SRO, the School Resource Officer position approved. I think that's a necessary thing in our schools. Getting a skate park coming soon, and the dog park. I was also on the splash pad committee for a little bit, and I'm happy to say that it's ready. We just need water to turn it on. We've really worked on changing the culture for our employees and our staff, and I think we're doing a great job there. We've implemented a strategic plan. We have a safety committee for our employees. We've released several publications: The City View that's came out and has all of our amazing information in it. I also suggested live streaming to Facebook when I first got on the council, and I'm happy to say we've been doing that ever since. We just approved the COLA raises for our employees, and we have tripled our applicants that are applying to the city. So we've done a lot of good work over the last four years. Looking forward to the next, possibly, four years, I really wanna work on walking paths. I know that my neighborhood especially has a hard time getting to the walking path. My son runs all over the city. You've probably seen him around, and so I just wanna make it safe for our kids when they wanna go do that. And then we've really been trying to focus on how do we get rid of some of these dilapidated buildings and clean up the properties around town. So those are my two biggest goals, I would say, for the future of Rollins.
Thank you. We'll move on to Elizabeth.
First, I wanna thank you all for hosting us here. It's a wonderful platform for candidates to kinda express, tell who they are. So thank you. Last night was wonderful. I've spent the majority of my life teaching young children and raising young children of my own. I spent my early years in Kentucky where I completed all of my education, receiving my Bachelor's of Art in Elementary Education from the University of Kentucky. I then moved to a small town in North Carolina, and from there to Los Angeles, California, where my husband was living. We made the best of our time in California, but after we'd been there for a while, my husband began a job search. This provided us with an opportunity to explore new adventure. We found that we felt called to a more remote densely populated area. The search led us to Rollins. My husband Colin McDonald works for Memorial Hospital of Carvin County. We arrived in Wyoming, and I immediately went back to teaching. As I re-engaged in my profession, I received a media specialist endorsement, and as well as my Master's of Education from Montana State University. And now I'm the Media Specialist for Carvin County School District One, and also teach grades two through five at Rollins Elementary School. My husband and I have found Rollins to be a wonderful and welcoming community. With our youngest off in school, I decided it was time to give back and do my part by running for Councilwoman at Large. Not only is this a wonderful way of giving back, but I care about the future of this community. When we moved here, there was the promise of our downtown being reborn. While it's been slow to start, I would like to see this dream realized. Our beloved Spruce Street needs businesses, not red-tagged buildings. Our city council needs to strengthen its commitment to economic development and bring in new business. We need the variety to offer more to those of us who live here, but we also need businesses that attract and employ young people who want to make Rollins their home. My platform is growth with transparency. I wanna help Rollins realize its potential while keeping the community engaged and informed.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Ward Two, and we'll hear from Linda.
Hello, everyone. I am Linda Smith, and I am completing my second term as Ward Two Councilperson. Can everybody hear me? I'll try harder. I care very deeply about this community, and I care very much about helping people, and that's my passion, and that's what I do. I'm not retired, but I have my own business. And I think the most important thing that a councilperson needs to do is to provide health and safety for our citizens. And that transgress, transfers from not only support for our police department, our first responders, our fire department, but across the board in whatever we need to do to keep our citizens safe. Well, my background does include, I, an associate degree from Western Wyoming College, and I'm proud to say that because I think going back, I was probably one of the first two, maybe one of the first few to graduate from, or from Western Wyoming College here, Higher Ed Center, so I'm proud of that. I did study at the University of Wyoming where I studied journalism. My experience, I think, is very, very helpful in the council. I've got over forty years of serving on various boards, including chairing the State Wyoming Developmental Disabilities Council. I've served on the Local Liability Pool Board for over sixteen years, and served as their secretary for sixteen years. I'm currently on that. I worked on the, or I was on Memorial Hospital Board. I've spent eight years on the Main Street Downtown Development Board, and I love all of the improvements that we're doing to the downtown. Hopefully, we can expand those out to the other Spruce Street and both ends of our community. So we have some things that we're looking at to do that. Excuse me. I also, I think, having spent thirteen years working for the city of Rollins as a grants writer, a grants manager, and also serving in the Community Development Office, I also worked for the city attorney. Helps me provide a wide background to understand what employees go through, so I can see both sides of what they're working with. I'm familiar with the city manager's office, and so therefore I know what it's like to serve in a community develop, or a city manager for a government. I'm running because I want to finish the six penny projects that we're working on, which is Edinburgh Street, Water Lines and Cemetery, the tunnel that Judy Dixon started way back when, when she's on the council. And so I think it's really important to keep an experienced person on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Toni, also running in Ward Two.
Thank you. I want to introduce myself to the great town of Rollins and let you know why I decided to run for city council. Two thousand and seven, my family moved to Rollins. I have five children. My oldest son is captain in the Army. My second son received an associate's from Western Wyoming Community College, as well as my daughter, and he now works at the Sinclair Refinery. I have two granddaughters who were born in Rollins. I received my associate's degree from Western Wyoming. I have worked at the Flying J, managed the Come and Go, and since two thousand and ten, I have worked at the Sinclair Refinery, now HF Sinclair, as a contract administrator. I'm active in my church, real life. In the past, I have watched and spoke at the city council meetings. I am not in a bunch of organizations which will give me the time to devote to city council. I feel every American should participate in their local government, as it is a privilege to do so. When you have many people running for office, it is a sign of a healthy town. I have brought to the city council's attention various issues, but I don't just bring up a problem without a solution. With that in mind, there are three items I'd like to change for the city of Rollins to give Rollins a win. One is W, workplace opportunities. We need, especially in light of recent events, not only to promote our town, but to bring jobs to our town. A town needs more than seasonal visitors, but a strong diverse workforce with the high-paying jobs to fill them. The people of Rollins deserve the opportunity to work. We need more than just a Starbucks or a sporting goods store, great as they are, but businesses that employ a hundred to two hundred people with good pay and benefits. Also, if we had excellent internet, the possibility is there to attract people who work from home and can choose to work anywhere. I, infrastructure, another topical issue. We need people in place with the skills to plan, have a strategy for our town in regards to the roads, the sidewalks, and the gutters. We need a plan on reviewing codes and ordinances to make sure they fit for today's world. We need to make the city's infrastructure, water, trash, et cetera, the priority, and learn from the mistakes of the past, not cover them up only to repeat them. We need to be secure in our ability to deliver vital services to our community. And N, new ideas. To thrive, we need a city that has opportunities for the people to develop physically and mentally. With the number of suicides in our town, I believe we need more attention to the mental health areas, as well as the resources for mental health. We also need a council that is for term limits, so more people have the opportunity to be in the council and using taxpayer money to promote. Re-election should not be tolerated. New ideas are hindered by old mindsets. I will appreciate your vote for common sense change.
Thank you. And next, we'll move on to Ward Three, and we'll start with Steve.
I'm Steve. I'm Steve Sager, thank you. I would also like to, I came to the forum last night. If you didn't get to come, that was, that was really fun. It was really interesting. My wife and I moved here sixteen years ago with our two kids, and I worked in the oil field, and then I moved and bought a business in the downtown area, Huckleberries, if any of you have ever been there. I was on the city council for six years. I was appointed, and then I ran, and I was elected, and I was the vice mayor for four years of that time. I'm also the current board chair for the Rollins DDA Main Street Program. I sit on the Parks and Rights Advisory Board, and along with Travis, and my wife, and Jen, we're the brain trust of the fairgrounds concession craziness. If you've ever been there, you know what I mean. And we, we do that with a great group of young, young kids and their advisors there. They're pretty outstanding. If you've ever seen them. I don't really have to work. I can just stand and go do this, and they're, they're okay. I stopped being on the city council two years ago. I had moved my mom here in the last year that I was on, on the city council, and my mom's eighty-three, and along with eighty-three comes all, all eighty-three-year-old problems. And we don't live near specialists. You have to drive everywhere. So it became a little overwhelming trying to get her taken care of, and still sit on the city council and all of the other stuff that I was doing at that time. And so I decided not to do this and let somebody else do it. Not really my choice. They elected them. And from there, I've taken care of all those things, and now I'm free to go back to doing what I was doing. So, that's about it. I mean, we'll get into all the other stuff when she starts asking questions, so.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Cheryl, also running in Ward Three.
I'm Cheryl Hume. I was born and raised in Scotts Bluff, Nebraska. I graduated from Mitchell High School, very small town, way smaller than Rollins. Then I went to WNCC for college. That wasn't really what I wanted to do. I went to work then in a nursing home for six years, worked at Regional West for six years, and went to then the prison, worked there for eight years as an officer out there, and then a case manager, and got to see a lot of things that opened my eyes to new ideas and things, and way of rehabilitating people and bringing them back into the community successfully. From there, I decided I wanted a challenge, and I bought a daycare. I have fifty-two small children who I feel very responsible for every day. I spend twelve hours a day there, six to six, Monday through Friday. For the last five days, every one of my babies is my baby. I'm responsible for them. I feel like I'm educating them, I'm training them. They are our future. They stand in front of me every day, and they're the ones who I'm going to say I'm proud that I helped push them to become successful. For the city council part of it, the reason I wanted to run is I'm for progress. I'm for something new, some form of accountability, not just for myself, but everybody on the board, the city. I believe in change. I know that's not a word you should use at these forums, but I believe things can be changed. You can bring things to the table. You can make things happen if you just have a solution when you bring the problem to the table. I'm looking for a challenge, I'm gonna say that. I'm looking for some opportunities to grow in the community. I'm also, we were foster parents as well. We adopted a daughter, I forgot that part, and I do have two older children, one who's starting residency in August in Portland, Oregon. He is triple majoring, so he will be a psychiatrist, a pharmacologist, and I don't remember the third one. So, he's given me a lot of opportunity and growth and support. I just thought I would try this, get to meet new people, come out with some new ideas, bring new ideas to the town. That's kinda where I'm at.
And last, we have Ward One. Unfortunately, Bruce Seeloff was unable to make it tonight, so we'll go to you, Debary.
Okay. I'm Debary Martinez, and I, I've been on the council a long time, since nineteen seventy-three. Served under the mayor for a government. I've served in all the boards that the city has. I've represented the city at the Wyoming Association Municipalities Conferences, either through the Resolution Committee or the Board of Directors. I have served on the county museum board. I've served on the Wyoming State Parole Board. I've served a lot of things, but I agree with all my constituents here, I think, that, or my colleagues here, that, that everything that they're asking for, I pretty much support. Getting it is another thing. Some of the big subjects that come up in the community are code enforcement. I support, strongly support code enforcement. I think we need another code enforcement officer. Will that solve the problem? Probably not. I have a gentleman that's constantly calling me about the weed problem, and I had to tell him the other day, I don't go out and cut weeds. I passed the ordinance so that we can cut weeds, and it's the staff of the city of Rollins that go out and do the job. I, I, I think we've gone a long ways this year in promoting, in getting a human resource coordinator on, so that make fairness to the employees and, and the jobs that they gotta do. I, I believe strongly in fairness. I think that, that I am now passing or introducing an ordinance that will, will address attendance in council meetings. You can't go on a council meeting and, and not show up to your meetings and represent your constituency. It's just not gonna happen. And so, our ordinance was fairly weak, so I'm introducing, or amending the one we got and adding something to it. That's one thing that I've learned to do is, is how to make some changes by using the ordinances that we got and then presenting them. The one that I did was the trailer ordinance. I introduced it to the council. I thought it was a, it wasn't the best ordinance that we could put together, but it was a fair ordinance. It was six months on the street in the summer, and take them off in the winter. And it was stopped, and it was sent to the, to the board. Yeah, anyway, we sent it to the board. I went to that meeting, and they passed it unanimously, brought it back to the council. It was defeated. I think, I think we have to have an ordinance fat. I got a number of calls throughout Rollins, not just my ward, but throughout the community, and asking for that to be done, and, and I think it's something that we need to work on. I supported the fact that we were able to give our employees a three percent, three percent COLA raise.
Debary, I think we'll have to stop you there.
I apologize. Okay, that's all right.
Thank you. Thank you for introducing yourself. I appreciate that. Next, we will enter into the question phase of the forum. You will be given two minutes to answer each question that's asked. After the responses are given, each candidate has an optional one-minute follow-up time. So as we're going, if you need that one-minute follow-up time, you're gonna have to let me know. Otherwise, we're just gonna move on to the next person, the next question. We will just be taking turns with the first person answering the question. Since Jackie started first, we'll move on to Elizabeth next. If we have any questions from the audience, please bring them up to me now, so we can make sure that we can get to those. Again, make sure you're paying attention to our timekeeper, the warning sign and the stop sign. If you don't see it, I will verbally give you that warning. Are there any questions? Okay, so we will start with a question that was submitted via our website. It's a two-part question. It's a little lengthy, so listen carefully. "How do you plan to ensure the residents' continued access to clean water, and what new system of checks and balances have you put in place, or will you put in place, to avoid the catastrophic failure of our municipal water system under your watch?" That's question one. "Hindsight is always twenty-twenty. For Linda, Debary, and Steve, it has been noted that you three were on the city council and voted no against raising water rates to replace the water lines. Please tell us why you choose to vote that way, and where do you stand on this now?" For the other candidates, "Where do you stand on raising water rates to replace the water lines?" And again, we're going to start with Elizabeth on this question.
All right. So the first part, how to, how do you plan to access, keep water for our community? Well, the first thing is transparency, and we, we need to, to let, which I think you all started doing, keeping the community informed. We also need to make sure that when any work is being done, that you're keeping a log, a maintenance log, which might be, I know in the past I hadn't done, but I think we're continuing to do that, or doing it now. But my biggest thing is communication. I mean, basically, we found out that we did not have, we actually lost water, and we found out because we completely ran out of water. We need, we should've known that we were having this kind, this problem. The community should've been aware, made aware that this, and not just wake up to no water. So my whole thing would be communication with the community. We don't need to place blame on anyone. Now let's just work about getting it fixed. I have no problem raising, I believe you said, was it the taxes, raising water?
Raising water rates.
To correct our problem. It needs to be corrected. We should never have this happen again.
Thank you. And next, we'll move on to Linda.
Yes, it was a fifty-year event, is what I call it, and a perfect storm where things come together. We are not blaming any one person, but once we were tuned in to the catastrophic problem that we had, we decided to get responsive, and it is our number one priority. Everything else can sit on the shelf in engineering, but the water situation is something that we have now designated as our number one. Checks and balances. We do have a contractor that is working on the pre-treatment plan, and he is in town today, so we're starting to get the pre-treatment up. So we've got two things going on: repair of what we have, and then looking at complete replacement of the Sage Creek line. We are currently working with staff. They are looking at grants and loans. Prior years, we would never have been able to find twenty million dollars, and so that was also a hindrance on what we could do previously, but we now have American Rescue Money. We're working with USDA, and we're also working with Wyoming Water Commission to put together packages. And we did receive six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the SLIP Board, which I was able to help ask the governor for that. And so what we want you to know is we're working on it. We will know how much in grants we have by next November, and I think by next year, we'll be able to not only be have our projects repaired, but we'll start on the twenty million dollar project.
Thank you. And on to you, Toni. Thank you. And on to you, Toni.
So, plan for clear, clean water access. That was high infrastructure. I do think the city has gone a long way in helping to remedy this problem. However, I do believe that we should learn, not hide, the mistakes of the past, and otherwise, we're just gonna repeat them. One of those things that I know they're working on that we could better do is maintenance logs. At the refinery, we have many systems in which we can log not only how the systems are running, but also the equipment, when it's repaired, how it's repaired, check to see if valves and things need replaced. I think that would be important for the city to utilize as well. Also, we need emergency checklist. We don't want, like what happened with the city of Sinclair, to run out of water because somebody didn't check something like they should've. There should be a list, and it should've been gone through each and every time. That comes along with training. Raising water prices. I know the city has worked really hard to get as many grants and as much outside sources for money as they can in order to keep our water bills low. However, when they do raise them, I hope not to see 100% increase like they did with the... Recycling. That's the word I'm looking for. Recycling, but that we can instead make that increase, you know, 5% increase, then later a 10% increase, but make it slow and steady. Because we will need to increase in order to maintain and keep the water lines where they need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And on to you, Steve.
Okay, so I've been here during, when it crashed and burned, but I will answer the other question. The infrastructure of the city of Rawlins is the same age as the infrastructure of about 90% of the United States. This is a $10 trillion problem. We're not the only ones with it. We do have wooden pipes. I think people are a little further along than that. That being said, when you ask about increasing something, you have to know its cost. And we can never get a straight cost answer as to what it costs to replace 27 spring boxes, the piping that connects them, the necessary easements to allow you to do so. And without that information, you cannot make just a random, yeah, we'll raise it a buck. What does that buy? You don't know. So without knowing that information, voting to say, yes, we're gonna raise something without what the outcome is gonna be, or whether you're gonna be successful, does not make any sense. Hence why, don't vote on something you don't know how it comes out. So don't do that. On the piping, if you've ever been out there, our water's beautiful. It is really quite nice. Four parts per million. It's about as clean as it gets in the world. Then it gets here, and it gets dirty. That's when it gets dirty, is here. Hence, why they're repairing the pre-treatment plant. So, that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cheryl?
On the first part of it, I obviously wasn't on the board to do some of that, but I have some ideas about raising the water prices. There you go. Again, first of all, you should probably make sure all your water meters are fair, and that everybody's meters are all working correctly, probably to start there. Some, I don't even know if some of them have the regulators to actually tell still what they're making, from my understanding. So I think that that's a good start. The other start is saying, yeah, you don't know how much something's gonna cost to fix, but if you honestly got a somewhat of an answer of, okay, the pipe's gonna cost this amount, this is gonna cost this amount, get a somewhat close identity for that. Then you take and you figure how many people are in the community on city water, and you kind of come up with a random number, as he said. I mean, it's not random, but it is random. It's close. I'm in favor of raising our water prices to help get our community back to where we need to be, if that's what it takes. Some people may think that's crazy, but I honestly think that that's... You have to start somewhere, whether it's small and you slowly gain, or whether it's a bigger amount and then you have some stored for something like this that needs fixed. So you start small and you work your way through it. I do have ideas that we could do, but you have to probably get the grants to do it. That's called seeding the clouds, to also help give us a little more water. Most people don't like to mess with Mother Nature, but they do that. That gives you more moisture in the air and brings the rainwater and snow, gives you a higher snow melt. They did it in Utah. It worked. That's an option. It's something to think about. So, those are things to think about.
Thank you. And Debary?
Okay. Regarding the water issue, particularly the raising, raising the rates of the water, I'm wrestling with that. My reasoning is behind. We still have a number of areas, not a large number, but we have a number of areas that do not have meters that are placed on a fixed rate. I don't think that's fair. Again, I mentioned that I believe in fairness. It's important for me to see if we can appropriate some funding to get that done. So I'm thinking, I know we need to have the water rates come up in order to pay for this project that we wanna do, this $20 million line that we wanna put together, but I'm still studying it, and that's where I'm at on the water rates.
Thank you. And back to you, Jackie.
Well, water is number one. It's very, very important for a city to have clean water. As a public health person, obviously, I support that. As far as, I did a little bit of research prior to this, because I knew this question was gonna come up, but with the help of some wonderful city staff. But we've already invested 1.55 million in the water line, and that was done over the winter in extreme weather. That came from the general fund and some ARBA funding. We've put 1.2 million into the designated water fixes via impact assistance funds, so that's more money we've done. We also approved an increase in operational costs for the new ongoing costs to run the pre-treatment each year, once it's up and running. And then we've also given up to half a million to get the pre-treatment running. So, we are trying to invest as much money as we can to our water systems. With the help of other grants, we've applied for, we have wonderful grant writers. She's doing amazing work, and she is putting a lot of effort into getting us some money into this community. As far as the maintenance part goes, we are getting a maintenance plan in place. We actually just funded a ditch witch machine that'll help clean off the... I'm not a water or pipe person. That's my husband's job. It'll help clean it out on a regular schedule, so we are planning for that. As far as raising rates, I do support raising water rates. We can always lower them if we need to in the future, but water, we need it, so it has to happen.
Thank you. All right. For our next question, I realize some of you spoke to this in your introduction. Some of you did not, however. So those of you who spoke to this question, please just expand a little bit more, and those of you who did not, we'll let you answer it. We'll be starting with Linda on this one. The question is, list three issues you would like to work on as a member of city council.
I'm more project-oriented rather than ordinances. I do want to have our ordinances recodified, but in doing that, that's a $200,000 issue if we send it out to outside folks. Our city attorney is working on various ordinances and looking to see if they're compatible with state laws we speak. Water is my number-one priority, and I want to be able to be there to help make sure that gets completed. And then, I would like to work on council unity. I think that we have all different lives, but I'd like to do more projects that we work on together. Now, council doesn't go out and work in the field. That's the city manager and his folks. But we can do little projects on beautification and things like that where we can work together.
Thank you. Toni?
I had my three points, but I can go over them again. Again, workplace opportunities. I do think that's very important. Promoting another cable-based company that does internet, so we get faster, more reliable internet. I think in this day and age, trying to attract those people who work from home and can work anywhere, why not come to Rawlins? I think that would be an important thing to promote. Again, infrastructure. It's really important that we be secured in our ability to deliver vital services to our community. I feel that, like Mr. Sanger said, that when we do raise the water rates, that we know exactly where that money's going and what it's for. I just feel it's important that we do that incrementally and not go from a $40 bill to an $80 bill. That would be quite a lot for some of our elderly in town, which is the majority of our town. And new ideas. I really feel that we do need new ideas, and we need innovation in our town in order to bring people here and keep them physically and mentally well. It is really important that we have an opportunity and a place for our young people and our adults who are going through a hard time mentally, that they have counselors available. Sometimes that's hard to find a secure counselor here, but we could maybe promote online possibilities as well. So, those are my three points. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. On to you, Steve.
Well, if you drive around or walk, walk is probably better. We have structural problems on most of our streets that you cannot walk from one end of the street to another end of the street without going in the street, because you're walking down a sidewalk that's probably not safe, and then into a curb or gutter that's all broken. We find that quite often throughout the community. When you're driving through here and you're not from here, and a lot of our tax dollars come from people who do not live here, about 20-plus percent of them, that's the first impression they get. You drive anywhere. It's a good thing they finished the front of the Frontier Prison, which is a great road. If every road, now they're gonna leave that road and they're gonna continue into, go to the museum, the next road is a problem. And all roads that lead to those things are problems. That's one. The other one, obviously, is water, and water is actually statutorily required for us to provide. We are required to provide that. So, that's a big one, but it is expensive. It is incredibly expensive. And then the last one, obviously, is economic development, how you go about that process. And we can say that real easily, but it is not an easy thing to do, especially in a small community, because you're competing with the next community, and in our case, that's 100 miles from here. You're competing with them to provide basically the same thing that they're providing with a much larger crew of people to work off of, which we do not have. So that one becomes a much more difficult thing. But those would be the three things that I would say if you walk around, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Thank you. On to you, Cheryl.
First one would be community cleanliness. When I first moved here, I was shocked. I'm not gonna lie. It's getting better over the nine years I've been here. So, cleanliness, keeping our properties and our businesses. I try my hardest to keep my business clean and areas safe as I possibly can. I agree that the sidewalks are an issue. The curbs and gutters in front of my business are an issue. Unfortunately, I believe that the water issue is more important right now, so I can wait and I can do my best to try and help fix what I can fix in that direction. The next thing is workplace opportunities, as she discussed. I agree with that. If we could have more, I mean, we have plenty of people that could work. It's bringing the opportunities here to create the jobs that are needed. That's sometimes easier said than done as well for small towns. The next thing on my list would be, what do I have on here? The following under ordinances, which was the cleanliness, and then projects of bringing different opportunities for younger folks and middle-aged folks that we can combine in our community that aren't super costly, but yet, if we worked and collaborated as a team, we could come up with ideas and ways to make it more successful for the young kids to have something to do to help encourage them in the future to be successful leaders.
Thank you. And Debary?
Okay. First on my list, I have water. I think, of course, we all gotta have water to live. Secondly, abandoned buildings. I would like to, I've been working on that, not only with the city, but also going to the Wyoming Association Municipalities, trying to get it to the legislature so that we could put some leads on this property and enforce it, because some of these people aren't even in our community. Along with that, I would like to tie it in with assisted living, so that so folks can stay here for the rest of our lives. That's a big issue, particularly in the wintertime when we have to travel and stuff. So I think that there's a group of people somewhere in the community that are working on that, and I would like to strongly support that. Also, code enforcement. Code enforcement is very, very important to see that we have decent code enforcement, that they're being enforced and being fair, and that all parts of the community are treated alike. That's about it.
Thank you. On to you, Jackie.
Besides water, we all know that's very important. I also believe in the economic development needs to happen. It's been happening. We've hired an economic development person for the city, and we already have a few, I can't say what they are, but a few businesses coming into Rawlins, and I'm very excited about that. But I also want the assisted living, Debary. I've been a component of that for a long time. Since 2010, I've been on that committee, and someday, we will make it happen. And then, the dilapidated buildings are a priority. They've been a priority. We need to get them, we need to hold these property owners that don't even live here accountable for their rundown places. And then, I really value recreation and health in our community. We are one of the lowest counties for our health rankings. Usually fighting for Fremont County for the bottom. So, one of the things I really wanna do is expand the walking path and make our city more accessible to each other. It should be safe for our kids to run. It should be safe for our kids to cross the street to go to school. We do have a walking path that we approved at, was it the last meeting? That's gonna go underneath, and that's been a long, long time coming, and we're very, very excited about that. I'm very passionate about the health of our community, so those are my top three.
Thank you.
Not to reiterate what every people have said, but yes, by the downtown, you know, making use of the buildings that we have downtown. I know when we have especially young teachers coming in, affordable housing, maybe more of a... I know we have apartments above those buildings. I would like to research and see, could that be a livable space for new young people coming in, that they could, housing that they could afford? That's a big one for me. And what are, you know, researching and knowing, what are our, what blocks us from bringing businesses in? You know, what are our big, you know, why are we not able to bring some of? I'm looking forward to hearing about the ones that you mentioned. And I also think we need things for our young people to do. I mean, I'm passionate about our youth. We have wonderful youth, and we need to keep them busy. There's too many things out on the street that they can, if they're not busy, that they can get into trouble. And we all probably know, I think we have a drug problem that we really do need to address, and what can we do to support our police with that problem? So I'm all about a safe community for our young people.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our next question. It's another two-part question. Do you believe the city has reached a critical time when the city is forced to make difficult decisions and should immediately prioritize municipal funding? decisions and should immediately prioritize municipal funding and begin to reduce non-essential services? If so, what are your three priorities for municipal funding and what areas should be reduced to accommodate that shift in priority? And Tanya, we'll be starting with you on this one.
Of course. I think all cities at this time have difficult decisions that they make. We are not the only ones in a drought. We are not the only ones that have water problems, piping problems, old pipes, maybe one of the few that have wooden pipes. But I think for a lot of areas in the United States, it's a critical time. We are in a time of changes, and that's always hard on a community. Three thing priorities for multiple funding?
So your three priorities for municipal funding and what areas should be reduced to accommodate that shift?
Again, I think for the infrastructure, our water, our roads, and trash removal, I think are three of the main things that a city should be able to provide, all citizens at a reasonable price. I think the city handled it very well when we did have this critical problem happen with our water. They worked very hard to get funding from different places so they could start working on the problem right away. I do believe we should look at the other infrastructure projects that we have ongoing and make sure that we are developing the funding of, so that when emergency happens, we can handle that. And if that means putting some things on hold that are more entertainment than necessary, then the council should be able to make those hard decisions.
Thank you. Next to you, Steve.
There are things that we are required to do statutorily, and they obviously have to be funded before you can do anything else. And then from there, it's just like your house. When your water heater blows up, you gotta fix the water heater. And once you fix the water heater, if you have money left over, you might get a lawnmower. So we have that same problem. When we have places within our budget where we can go, we can offset. We don't have to do that now, which would be curbs and gutters and stuff of that nature that you would, you would not be doing. When you're asking for three, you'd have to actually tear apart the budget and go, based on the Crete report, are we not gonna be getting this amount of money? What are we getting? We don't know. I don't know. I'd have to ask you. I don't know. So, once we know how much money you're getting, then you have to make your adjustments. The problem is, is that money is after you've already finalized your budget. So now you gotta go back and take it apart again and start all over, try to find those spaces you can take money out of, or not spend. One or the other, spend on something else that you're required to provide. So I wouldn't know what three would be. I'd have to look through.
Thank you. Cheryl?
I'll be honest, the budget is the probably toughest issue that you can ask anybody. I was asked, when I worked at the prison, to cut the budget, and unfortunately, some people were happy about it, some weren't. I cut it a hundred and four thousand dollars in a year. I held the prisoners accountable and made them work for every penny they got instead of just being paid, which was part of the problem, but they didn't realize that at the time. So budget cuts start after you've received everything and you know exactly what you got. And like you said, you're gonna go through and you're gonna look at, what do we need? What can hold off? And what do our citizens support in our needs? Do they think we really need to cut the budget in areas such as the dog park? Not saying they are, just throwing things out there, that is that more important than fixing the curb and gutters that people in our community walk on every day downtown? Is that more important? Those are things you just have to, once you get that budget, you can actually look at it, and you can start breaking down the needs from the ones, and that's where you start first.
Thank you. And Dabari?
Just like Mr. Sanger said, you have certain things you gotta have. I don't care how you look at it, that's what we get. Whatever's left over is what we get to do with. The things that we would have to look at closely would be the amount of monies that we put into recreation, the amount of money we have out there at the golf course. Those are the kind of things that, that would push cable show, or we might have to do some heavy cutting. Water, streets, all those things are very important in the community, so that's, that's the way I look at it. I, I'm kind of old-fashioned. My, I grew up with a large family with little money, and my dad paid the bills first, and whatever we had left, we might take a vacation, and that's how it works. To ask for a lot of things, it takes seven member council to get it. You just don't go up to the council and say, well, this is what I'm gonna do and this is what I want. It don't work that way. You gotta get some votes from the rest of the council, and if you don't have the support, you don't get it. That's it.
Thank you. Jackie?
The first part of that question was if, I feel like we're, I think the whole country's in a critical stage right now. My three priorities, if I just had to label them off the top of my head, would be water safety and the sewage. I worry about the sewage. I think some of the things you could do is pay off some of those long-term debts so you're not having those in your budget every year, and then hopefully, when the times are rough, you can help get through the storm a little better. I believe our city staff is amazing, and I wouldn't wanna lose a single one of them. So if we were to have to make cuts, it would probably be through attrition that I would start with. Let's see. I don't, I think the budget process is so in-depth and so involved, and you have so many people helping you through it. I really think that through that process, you just automatically kind of know where you need to put your priorities and where the money goes. So I'd rely heavily on the city staff to help me make those decisions. I'm, I personally don't know their day-to-day jobs in and out, so I would rather just give them a blank, you need to cut ten percent, and then have them figure it out and help us through that process, because they're the ones that know their departments, they're the ones that know what the job is, and with that, they're the ones that are gonna know the best places to cut. So I would rely heavily on my staff.
Thank you.
What's it? Delo on that, I agree. We have a wonderful group of people working for us at City Hall, and they know more than, they're right in the trenches, so they know, they know more about that. But as far as our municipal funding, what's important, obviously, you gotta have water, you gotta have roads, but we also need our first responders, and we need to make sure that their needs are being met, because they're the ones that take care of our community. And that is, that to me is a top priority.
Thank you. Alina?
When you are dealing with the city budget, you have pots of money. You have enterprise funds that go for specific things, and that money cannot be spent on what you call the general fund money. So then you get very specific grants that go for specific things. So when you put that all together, sometimes you can't cut where you really want to because of basically earmarked funds. So that's what we're dealing with a little bit. Also, my priorities would be pretty much in first responders, health and safety matters, street and sewer maintenance, and whatever we need to do with the pre-treatment plan, that's more imminent than continuing. But yes, the United States, I think, is in a crunch. We are lucky here that we've been able to maintain the tax base that we have. We only get five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars from taxes for houses, house tax. And then the rest of the money is through fees and state revenue through the Craig Report. And so as that goes up and down, then we have to take the budget and make that fit to the monies that we are receiving. And what would I eliminate? The last thing that I want to eliminate is our staff, because we need all of them. We've got lots of projects in the hopper, and we need every one of them.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Facebook, and we'll be starting with Steve on this one. Would you support making changes to the code of ethics to hold council members more responsible for their actions as a member?
Sure. You know, that's, no. Wait. Oh, that would be foolish. No, that, if I knew what the basis of the question was, it'd be easier for me to go, yeah, I would, I would have a problem with that, but I don't know what the basis of the question is. But yeah, more responsible for their ethics. You mean whether they're chewing on people they shouldn't be chewing on? I don't know what, like I said, I'm, this is a shot in the dark. And it's really dark.
And maybe they're talking about basic accountability.
Basic accountability, sure. Well, you know, we, we're suffering nationwide from a lack of decorum, period. We don't speak to each other well, we don't speak about each other well. That's just, that's just a nationwide problem at this particular point. It'd be better if you just, what was that rule about? You catch more bees with honey than vinegar? It's easier to not say anything instead of saying something stupid. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Cheryl?
I do believe that we should be held accountable, whether you're on the council or not, we as human beings should hold ourselves accountable. When you're out in public, you should be respectful of who you're talking to and the nature of things. I totally agree with that. Accountability of being on the council, whether it's for something that comes up and you weren't supposed to speak of it, per se, to anybody, that means you don't speak of it to anybody. You, you know, you're holding yourself accountable at that level. I honestly think that if you're gonna represent these people in your community, you should show them how you, how to act and be appropriate. Be honest, be upfront with people, let them know that you're here to listen, but you're not going to bash your neighbor or your other council members, you're here to, or whoever the issue is with.
Thank you. Dabari?
And I'm gonna agree with the question too. I think that it's very important that you represent the public to the best of your ability. You, I try to stay in contact with everybody. I, I have a Mantrain phone, and I, I go to everybody that calls me, I'll go visit with them and talk to them. We have certain rules on the council that we have to follow. We can't tell employees what to do, what not to do. That's not my job. That's the job of the city manager, that's his responsibility. So I see to it that he gets the information if I have a problem or somebody brings one up. And be very respectful. Be respectful for what, you might not agree with what they're asking you to do, or, but you try to, you try to compromise, and if you can't compromise, I've suggested people that don't agree with me to bring it to the council, bring it to the floor, and if the council supports it, I lose. That's just the way it works. That's it.
Thank you. Jackie?
I also don't really know the basis of the question, but I absolutely do support a code of ethics, because I have my own code of ethics, and I hold myself to a high level of integrity and professionalism, and I try to present myself that way to the public and to our staff, and I, yes, I'm all for ethics.
Yes, definitely. I'm a teacher, so I'm a big proponent of our code of ethics and how we present ourselves out in the community, and fairness and communication. If you have a problem, talk about it. Don't, don't have fighting be your first, your first response. Let's come up with a solution. But it's very important that we be in on council and any, any professional or any position, just being a human being, we should hold ourselves to a code of ethics, so yes.
Thank you. Alina?
I have two trains of thought on ethics. The city council has to adhere to state statutes. They have their own ordinances that we adhere to, and we expect each other to be ethical. We have on occasion someone we felt shouldn't have been speaking on the subject, we ask that person not to. We police ourselves. I believe in being open. I believe in being as transparent as we can. But sometimes I think if you make a lot more rules than you already have, if you just break them, and then people hold that over your head. So that's my two trains of thoughts. But I do feel that honesty, integrity, and being forthright with everyone is the best policy, so there you go.
Thank you. Tanya?
Without reading the code of ethics in place, it's hard to say whether there needs to be changes, but I definitely think there should be a very strong code of ethics, whether you're at work or at the council or just in everyday life. People need to be treated with this respect. Just because you don't agree with their opinion doesn't mean they're hated and marked off. You just don't agree. I do believe that ethics are important for the council. You shouldn't be running for the council to promote your business. Oh, if I put stop signs up so my business gets the right of way, I have an advantage. If there's anything that has to do with your business, you should have stayed from voting. I also don't think you should be on the council to get back at your neighbor. Oh, their weeds are high, I need to be on the council so I can get them. That's part of being an ethical person, is you're not on the council for your own benefit, you're on the council for the benefit of the people who you support. When I was in Salt Lake, I was speeding, and a young police officer pulled me over. And I, I asked him, because I was just generally interested, you know, why don't policemen give us warnings anymore? What happened to that? Maybe I'm old, but you used to get a warning. And he said, well, there's two reasons for that. One, people don't listen to the warnings. You know, they've had people who've given two or three warnings and then ended up dying in an accident. That's one reason. The other reason is there is that perception that there are favoritism toward one person or toward the other, if they give a warning instead of giving a ticket. So that's why they give a ticket to everybody, is to give people that fairness. So I think ethics is very important.
Thank you. And we'll be moving on to our last question. Did we have any questions from Facebook? Any questions submitted from the audience? Okay. The last question, we're gonna start with Cheryl. Last question. What differentiates you from the other candidates for this office? As in, why should people vote for you? And do you have one last message for voters?
Honestly, I don't know the man I'm running against, so I'll be honest. So I have no experience on city council, but I have experience talking to people. And people are what make us work. We're here for them. They live here as well as I do, listening to them, taking in what they have to say Honestly, I think that's probably all I have to say about that. And I wish you the best, I really do. I do. I don't, I mean, I'm just here to get an experience. Thank you. God bless you. Got my water. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Dabari?
I just want people to know that I'm gonna be doing the same thing that I have been doing for the last forty years. I'm gonna go to meetings, I'm gonna listen, I'm gonna, some I'll agree with, some I don't. I think most of my colleagues know that Uh, I think most of my colleagues know that if I don't agree with them, I vote no. And if I agree with my vote, yes, I don't hide. I, I, I talk to them, I visit with them. I wanna continue to work on my ward the way I have for the forty years I have, allowing people to use their properties to put mobile homes, which they couldn't do anywhere in Rollins, to build a low-income assisted housing project, uh, in Rollins, uh, that's been there for twenty-some years, to reroute trucks from my ward that were, uh, that would bring in cattle and oil in front of a park, uh, reroute the work to get that rerouted. We've got two parks on my ward. We put one point three million dollars on streets on my ward. Here a few years ago, using the sixpenny. Uh, those are the kind of things that I do. And, and, uh, if any of my colleagues have, uh, something that they'd like to bring up and they visit with me and they can talk me into it, that's how I go.
Okay. Thank you. Jackie.
I, I genuinely think that if you chose myself or Elizabeth, you'd be in good hands. The city of Rollins is gonna be in good hands with either of us. I have lived in this town since I was two years old. I love this city. I don't have any plans to leave. I'm raising three wonderful boys in this city and I'm trying to build their love for Rollins as well. I, I genuinely hope they move back here after they graduate college. And I want them to have good jobs and I want them to have opportunities. So, I enjoy being on the city council. I think we've done some amazing things and I'd like to see where we can go in the next four years. So, I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. We talked earlier, we both felt very like, as long as one of us gets in this position, one of us will, um, I feel very good. It's all new to me. I am not a politician. I have no personal agenda. I just care about, I have a passion for our youth and a safe community, that they, for them to grow up and for them to want to come back, um, to live. I think that we need to, we need to really, something for them to be proud of and wanna come back home. Would love you both.
Bless your hearts.
I'm married to a guy who was born and raised, um, well, he lived in Saint Clair, but he was born at the Rollins Hospital. We raised our two daughters here in Carbon County and they graduated from Rollins High School. And now they're about to graduate, both of them, thank God, from the University of Wyoming. So we've, we've dedicated our life, I have a grandson that's in the Air Force. So we've dedicated our lives to being good community, um, participants. And I think that, well, I have vast experience in budgeting. I, I have been, uh, what's it, county clerk and put together budgets for eight years. I've worked on, um, as a decision maker. I've done that on the council and I've done that with local government liability pool. And so I, I have a lot of experience in budgeting and that's why I take it very seriously. And so with that, I would like to ask for your support and your vote on August sixteenth and again in November. Thank you.
Tanya.
Put myself on the ballot as a vote for common sense change and for win, for workplace opportunities, for strengthening our infrastructure and for new ideas that are not hindered by old mindsets. I am willing to listen and work for solutions, not just shrug my shoulders and say, that's just the way it is. I wanna make a positive difference that will result in my grandchildren wanting to stay, work and build a good life right here in Rollins. If there are any way possible to pass a law that your kids can only live sixty miles away from you. I passed that in a second. As it is, they live on opposite coasts. But, um, I, I, I want to be your choice, uh, for common sense change and I would really appreciate your vote in August and November. Thank you.
And I get to go last. So, um, my daughter moved away to South Carolina. Comes back here, gets married, has a baby, buys a house. So my kids live here, my kid lives here. So I'm lucky, she's already here. She, uh, I'm, I'm blessed to have a grandson. So it's really, it's really important for you to be able to provide a community that people want to come to, whether it's your kids or someone else's kids. Or somebody who's just traveling through your town and goes, you know, I wanna live here because it's a cool place to live. Um, I was always struck by, when I first got here, that everybody waved at each other. I lived in LA, you don't do that. So, you just drive down the road, people wave at you. And I, I didn't understand what, what that entailed and why they did that. Well, first of all, they know all each other. That's the first thing. I always lived around nine million people, so I didn't know my neighbor. Um, you didn't talk to them, that wasn't safe. And then I went to the oil field and the same thing, you drive down the road. Well, I realized they're waving at you because that's the last person that sees you before you drive off into nowhere. And that might be the last time anyone sees you. So, the friendliness was overwhelming and it was such a cool thing. The benefit I have is I've already sat on the city council and that gives me, and we all know the speed of government, right? It's really super slow. And so not a lot has changed in a two-year period of time. So I'm not very far behind in the catch-up and I've, I've already gone through that really steep learning curve of what are we doing? What did you just say? Why did I just get voted down? All those rules. So I, I, I understand that. So that's an, an advantage I have. I also don't know Cheryl. So, the first time I met her was when she sat down right here. So that's, uh, that would be the, the huge moments. Okay? Thanks, I appreciate your vote if you decide to vote, but please vote. Please go vote. It's intensely important.
Thank you. And we just wanna say thank you again to all of the candidates who came and shared today, as well as the audience here. And thank you to our audience on Facebook as well. We enjoy hosting these things and it's great when we have a good turnout. So thank you all for coming.